Good evening. It's San Dimas City Council and Successor Agency meeting will come to order. Please rise.
Mr. Flack, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Tonight, we have two recognitions.
Mayor, we need to have the closed session report?
Sorry.
Yes, City Council and Successor Agency met in closed session tonight to discuss the three items on the agenda. The council had a discussion with staff on those items, but there was no reportable action. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, recognizing March as the Red Cross Month. Staff, anything?
Mayor, there is no one from the Red Cross attending the meeting tonight, so what's on the agenda is a standard recognition that will be mailed to the Red Cross.
Okay, so you guys will take care of mailing that off? Thank you. Okay, April is DMV Donate Life Month. One legacy abandoned ambassador, Cheryl Macham? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium. Thank you. DMV Donate Life, whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives this last year, and most, the most ever. Whereas, any person can register to be an organ, eye, or tissue donor regardless of age or medical condition. Whereas California residents can sign up with Donate Life California donor registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, I, Mayor Emmett G. Bader, Mayor Pro Tem Eric Weber, council members Dennis Bertone, John Ebner, and Ryan Vienna hereby proclaim the month of April, of April 2022 as DMV Donate Life Month in the city of San Dimas. In witness thereof, I, Emmett G. Bader, have hereon set my hand and caused the seal of the city of San Dimas to be affixed this eighth day of March 2022. Ma'am, would you have, thank you, thank you very much, and would you like to say some things?
Sure. Thank you so much, Mayor Bader, and the Senate Council for declaring April as DMV Donate Life Month. My name is Cheryl Mahan, and I am the ambassador for One Legacy to the city of San Dimas. And wow, it's good to be here. I haven't been here for a couple of years. But briefly, I'm a living donor. My brother has my kidney, and, has one of them. Only one. But my family is affected by polycystic kidney disease, and the initials are PKD. And those are three little initials that have changed my family's life for generations. My grandfather, my father, my brothers, and my sisters, and now it has gone down onto the next generation, to my nieces and nephews. So they're awaiting life-saving kidney transplants. Right now, there are 99,000 people awaiting for, waiting for a kidney on the national registry. California has the most of those people waiting for a kidney. So I would just like to encourage everybody to sign up at the DMV, or you can sign up at donatelifecalifornia.org to become a registered organ, eye, or tissue donator. Donator. I always say donator, donator. See, I did it again. Donor. So I just encourage you all to do that. I hope you do that. You could be somebody's hero, and you can save somebody's life. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, we'll go into oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda, or not on this agenda. Public comment will not be taken during each of the individual items, agenda items, except for the public hearing items. Comments on the public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, an legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff and set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, Council, the first speaker is Jeff Templeman, speaking on street people.
So I always told you that I wouldn't bother you unless there was an issue. And so, for the audience, my name is Jeff Templeman, and I was, I used to sit right there where Mr. Vienna is sitting. I'd like to introduce Alan Chen, a local resident, who wants to tell you a story about something that happened to him today with one of the street people.
Good evening, Council. A lot of you probably know me, because I've seen a lot of you, probably seen me walking around. This morning, I'm sorry, this afternoon, after having lunch with Jeff, my daughter and I, my two-year-old daughter Sedona, we went to the park, we were on our way home, and this transient-looking person was kind of, you know, we were perpendicular to us. We were coming along with them. When he approached us, he yelled a big "F you" to me, which, at which point, I said, I just say, oh, that's so nice of you, and kept walking. But he then got off his bike and kicked it aside, pulled up his pants, and then started to approach us, at which point, I yelled, you know, hey, back the "F" off, and so on and so forth. And at that point, some of the construction workers saw the commotion with one of them. He had came by to see what's going on, see if we needed help, and I proceeded to yell at him, and explosive, and stuff like that, to keep him away from us. You know, and then he finally just kind of got back on his bike and went away. And, you know, I've always known of the transient issue in San Dimas, that's always been an ongoing thing, but I think today really hit home, because, you know, I walk around all the time, I go to the park with my daughter, and a lot of the local people, the local businesses, they know us. But this is the first time I actually feel physically threatened for, you know, my, and especially my daughter's livelihood. So that's just something I really wanted to bring up. It's just one of those things that I don't know what we could do. And then, by the way, and after I got my daughter back home to safety, I called the sheriff, called 911. You know, I told him about the situation, and I went back to the site, saw the man kind of, you know, pacing around in front of a house. Anyways, I told, I coordinated with the sheriff, they finally showed up. The sheriff lady told me that, well, because he didn't do anything, there's nothing they could do. And that, she, and she didn't talk to the gentleman, she just drove by, kind of saw him pacing around, checked him out. And afterwards, I talked to her, and she said that because no crime had occurred, there was nothing she could do about it. She said she would empty patrol in that area, if he's, that's the area he's usually around. But I just feel that's a little bit counterintuitive, because basically, I have to be actually physically attacked, you know, for it to have any weight. But anyways, that's, that's what I just want to report to the City Council. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, because there's two of us, it's six minutes, right? Anyway, uh-oh. The council knows my background in law enforcement. I have the utmost respect for the Sheriff's Department. The perception from a lot of people that I talk to is that they're not, they don't want to bother reporting anything, because they don't think anything will happen. And it's not just the Sheriff's Department, they've got a district attorney that doesn't want to file cases. You know, the state has billions of dollars, and the HH vote that San Dimas said no to still took place in the county, and we don't see any success from any of the dollars that have been floating around to fix the problem. I appreciate that Councilmember Vienna is trying to work some things out, but we actually need the hospitals that can handle the mental health issues, and the drug issues, and what have you. Honest homeless people, I'm happy to help. But the street people are stealing food, they're stealing products out of Lowe's, food from the local restaurants, wandering around out in the street, because they feel this entitlement. And I just think it's time to do something. And I don't know what the answer is, but it's time, before somebody gets hurt, or we have a vigilante that starts fixing things. So bless you all. Thank you for letting us speak, and maybe you can pay some attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for staying involved.
Speaker number two is Sylvia Melendez with the San Dimas Chamber.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sylvia Melendez. I'm with the CEO of the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to invite the public for an after-hours mixer that we'll be having this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30 at High Point Brewing, located at 402 West Arrow Highway. The San Dimas Chamber of Commerce and Churchill Mortgage will be having the after-hours mixer and e-waste collection to bring awareness to one of our local nonprofit organizations called Heroes Deserve Help. Heroes Deserve Help's mission is to provide technical support to veterans for school and job training programs. Unfortunately, they have been experiencing a decline in donations, and we would like to ask the public for their support by dropping off e-waste items during the event. Heroes Deserve Help will be collecting the items from 5:30 to 7:00 on-site the day of the mixer. Each donation will receive a raffle ticket towards a prize at the mixer. For more information and restrictions, please view the calendar item on our chamber website, sanddimaschamber.com. You could call us also for more information at 909-592-3818, or email info@sanddimaschamber.com. In addition, on a different note, I wanted to congratulate our very own San Dimas Board Chair Marilyn Sparks. I'm sure that you have maybe heard, but she was selected to receive the 41st Assembly District 2022 Women of Distinction Award, representing the city of San Dimas. We want to congratulate her on this very well-deserved honor, and I, we are so lucky as a community and as a chamber to have her represent our community. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kathy A. with Charter Oak Mobile Home Park.
Good evening. You all know who I am. You know where I live. I'm not repeating it. First of all, I wanted to thank Mayor Bader, and Councilman Bertone, and Ebner, and Henry Noe for coming to our meet-and-greet last week at Charter Oak Mobile Home Estates. We appreciate you guys coming, but unfortunately, it fell very short of the expectations of the residents. The residents assumed it was going to be an opportunity to hear from the managers and the management company of their plans for the park and what they were going to do, but they felt like the meeting was commandeered by the city manager, and therefore, all they heard about was budget plans and capital expense, and things that really don't matter to us seniors. We're getting older by the minute. Five years from now, none of us might be here. So we appreciate the effort, but we still have not formally heard one word out of our manager's office. We had a Neighborhood Watch meeting today, the managers didn't come. And you would think, as managers of that park, they would have taken an interest to hear what the Sheriff's Department had to say, and how we could make our park a lot safer. But I do want to thank you for you guys coming and staying involved in what's happening at Charter Oak. Let me get my list. The other thing I want to bring up is, we still have some major concerns about the ability of these managers to run the park. I went in last week, and I asked for the kilowatt charges for the electric company for the months of January and February, because I wanted to analyze my bill, because I think they're making mistakes on our utilities. They told me they don't handle the bills. Everything's done at a corporate office. So therefore, if they don't handle the day-to-day bills of what's happening in the park, they're not going to be able to answer the day-to-day questions that we seniors have when there's discrepancies on our bill. The other thing is, at our meet-and-greet, the question came up from a resident as to who is responsible for trees in the park, getting trees removed that we feel are not safe, or overgrown, or whatever. John Davis, who's the head of the management company, spoke up and said, well, the law says it's the resident. Well, he was wrong. The, if you go to the California law on mobile home parks, and I can give you the, hang on, I'm old, takes me time. If you go to section 798-37.5, where it talks about trees and driveways, it says, and I quote, "With respect to trees on rental spaces in a mobile home park, park management shall be solely responsible for the trimming, pruning, and removal of any tree and the cost thereof upon the request of the resident." So I think that we need to make sure that when information is being disseminated to the residents, that it's 100% accurate, because otherwise, they will think it's their responsibility, and then they will have to go out and figure out how to pay to get trees removed when it's not their responsibility.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Maddie G. with Charter Oak Mobile Home Park.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for attending the meet-and-greet last week, and for attending the Neighborhood Watch meeting today, along with Captain Ash. And I'd like to thank you, Councilman Ebner and Councilman Bertone, for attending that meeting last week as well. We appreciate your interest and your resolve to try and find some resolutions for us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lori Adair, speaking on the item two, equestrian fees.
Lori, can you wait until we pull that up, or you have an obligation?
Sure, yeah, I'll wait. Sounds good.
Next speaker is Bernice Cepeda with Charter Oak Mobile Home Park.
Good evening. My name is Bernice, and I live at the Charter Oak Mobile Home Park since May 2006. And for the years that I had lived there, you know, the managers have taken care of the place, looking, it looked nice and neat, and, but now the managers that we have right now, they are not. And I feel very disappointed, like the other residents feel, and they need to be called the attention. They used to go around and make sure that we keep everything nice and clean, and everything was nice. And it was, you know, really nice to live there, but now they are not doing anything, and we don't even get to see them. The manager don't walk, I got to see him from the time that he came in, only one time yesterday, he was walking by, and that was it. And so we need you to please help us to, they need to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, those are all of the speaker cards that have been turned in.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Council?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Dave Milbrandt. I have the privilege of teaching government at San Dimas High School. A couple of things, one personal, two professional. One, I do often live in the parking, special parking district that is in that region there, and we would appreciate some increased patrols by code enforcement or sheriffs right around the school hours, in the morning and afternoon, drop off and pickup there, because we tend to have some increased traffic and challenges in those areas. That would be nice. Two professional things. One, we're looking forward to students in Government Day for the first time in, I think, three years now, two or three years since we've had our COVID-19 restrictions. We're looking forward to coming back. We have our 15 students that are signed up. Looking forward to being here in the next council session and spending time with you all. Thirdly here, as a government teacher, I also have the opportunity to encourage students to get involved in campaigns this campaign season. I know several of you are running, some folks here on council, and also some in the audience. We would love to have a chance to like, give them your information, campaign information, contact information. So if you need some people to walk some precincts, some smiling faces, to carry some things, and some strong shoulders, we could probably use a few of those, I imagine, feel free to contact me at the high school, D-Milbrandt, that's M-I-L-B-R-A-N-D-T, at benita.k12.ca.us, and give us some of your information. I'll pass it along, probably sometime early next month, when the campaign season gets in full swing, and hopefully get some people to help you out there as you're looking to run for office again. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Milbrandt.
Mr. Milbrandt, the city's election webpage has a listing of all of the candidates who have pulled papers, who have filed papers, and who have qualified. It has their, all of their contact information, phone numbers, and email addresses. And that's updated, I won't say every day, but it's updated every time someone posts papers. So that's a good resource for your students.
We'd be delighted to look into that and give them that information. Thank you so much, Ms. Flack.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello again. I'm Hope Palmerton, Charter Oak Mobile Estate, space 60. I have a concern maybe for the Public Works Department. The entrance in and out of our park directly across from San Dimas High School, when they removed the bus station that used to be right to the west side of the park, they, particularly on game nights, there's a difficulty getting in and out of the park for the seniors that live there. There's no red painted curb on the west side of the park, which makes it difficult to see past the park traffic during game night, to make a left turn. And if you're, I don't know, if you're, if you're more aware of your surroundings and what's going on, you would take a right and go clear around the block. But to take a left at that point, it makes it almost impossible to see the oncoming traffic. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the City Council at this time? All right, we'll move forward with a consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion unless members of the City Council request separate discussions.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, end of, excuse me, other business overview of the mid-year financial report. Staff?
I'd like to introduce Michael O'Brien, our Administrative Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Director. The purpose of tonight's mid-year report is to inform the council and public of changes to the city's financial condition and projections that have materialized since the adoption of the 2021-22 budget to the mid-year point recognized at the end of January 2022. The most important update that has taken place since the adoption of the budget to the mid-year point would be the release of the final ruling for the American Recovery Plan Act Funds, also known as ARPA. When the budget was adopted in June of 2021, staff based the revenue budget for the ARPA funds in the amount of $2,500,000, based on early estimates of what the city would be allocated, and what staff believed we could justify as eligible uses of funds per the previously released interim rules, which included uses such as a formula for revenue loss calculation, PPEs, funds to hire positions eliminated or left unfilled during the pandemic, water, sewer, storm drain, and broadband projects. When the allocations were finalized, San Dimas' portion amounted to a total of $8,42,058, of which $4,21,429 was distributed in the current fiscal year, with the remaining amount to be distributed in the next year. Because interim final, the interim rule was restrictive in its uses, and the fact that the 2021 fiscal year included a significant increase from new sales tax producers that were not available in the base year 2018-19, the city saw challenges in identifying additional lost revenues and other eligible uses for these funds. Staff decided that it would be best to wait until the final rule was released before earmarking the funds for use, to see if additional uses would be added that could better suit the needs of the city. In January of 2022, the final rule was released, which included a provision that makes the use of funds much less restrictive. The final rule allows recipients to claim a standard revenue loss of $10 million, or the amount of allocation, whichever is less. The city's allotment of $8,42,858 falls under this threshold, which allows us to claim all the funds as lost revenues to be recouped without the need for revenue loss calculation. The final rule also states that all the ARPA funds must be tracked, or traced back to expenditures for general governmental services, and not to be used to pay pensions, debt, or beheld to increase reserves. In order to properly account for this, staff recommends establishing a new fund number 101. By separating the revenues and general governmental service expenditures to a separate fund, it makes clear to the Treasury that the ARPA funds were used for eligible expenditures, and not for the ineligible line items that we mentioned just previously. Moving expenditures out of the general fund and paying for them with ARPA funds allows the other revenues generated from activities such as property tax, sales tax, TOT, to be used for any other purpose without the restrictions that come with the ARPA funds. Moving on from the ARPA funds, I want to discuss the rest of the city's financial activity. The slide before you demonstrates the actual operating revenues over expenditures since the 2018-19 fiscal year, and the new projections for 21-22. As you can see from the exhibit, the gap between revenues and expenditures began to decrease in 2019-20, only to rebound sharply in '21, thanks to a mix of expenditure reductions, extended vacancies, and an influx of temporary sales tax revenues. As we look to the projections for 21-22, that gap is reduced to a little over $360,000. When the budget was adopted, it was anticipated that operating expenditures would be over revenues by a little over $111,000 in the 001 General Fund, and a total of just over $194,000 loss, when you include the use of Equipment Reserve Fund 70. Now, the 001 General Fund is projected to be at least $360,000 in the black, despite a number of additional expenditure appropriations that were previously approved, along with the recommended amendments for approval this evening. The next slide will highlight what has changed in terms of revenue figures that makes up this difference. As this slide illustrates, difference between the revenue projections at the time of the adoption of the budget today is with sales tax returns. HDL, who is our sales tax consultant and property tax consultant, increased the estimate by over $1.1 million. This figure does not include the large influx of revenues that received last fiscal year. As HDL has indicated, the city, the additional revenues are derived mostly from the purchases of equipment and the sales tax assessed on those purchased, as opposed to generated from sales. Once we get the data from the fourth and first quarter returns, I believe we'll have a definitive answer on this, but as of right now, we don't anticipate any additional sales tax from that source moving forward. The sales tax increase is mainly attributed to increases in restaurant sales, fuel, and consumer goods. TOT revenue projections are also anticipated to come in above budget. While the new projections are conservative, I would not be surprised to see TOT's revenues go back to pre-pandemic levels. As of today, two of the city's TOT generators are over 100% of budget, and others appear to be on track of meeting or exceeding the budget. Property taxes have also been adjusted to come in slightly above budget, as home assessed values have increased, and median home sale prices continue to rise, increasing taxable values. One revenue source that is likely to fall below budget is interest earnings. Due to fair market value adjustments, particularly for our safest investment options in Leif and Cal Trust, which has the majority of our cash reserves invested, those remain very low. While Treasury CDs and bond rates have started to increase, Cal Trust and Leif rates of returns have remained very low, ranging from .47% to 0.23%, as of January's investment report. In terms of expenditures, it is difficult to assume large reductions, because we have to assume that if the funds have been appropriated, then departments can spend it up until June 30. Aside from salary and benefit savings derived from vacancies, which we calculated to be approximately $100,000 as of January 2022, the other expenditure line items may be used and should be factored in for the purposes of these projections. and should be factored in for the purposes of these projections. With that in mind, tonight's staff is proposing, staff report is proposing additional $469,548,000 to account for expenditure light items that have been affected by increases to supply costs related to inflation, additional cleaning to prevent the spread of COVID-19, expenditures related to the wind event, overtime because of staff shortages and additional staff needs for rentals and classes that were not anticipated when the budget was developed. These amendments were factored in the budget balance, fund balance projections that are being shared with you tonight. As discussed earlier, we're also proposing separating the revenues associated with the ARPA funds and allocating expenditure light items to utilize what was originally budgeted in the general fund as additional revenues to separate to Fund 101. In order to obtain a better understanding of how the city has been able to generate surpluses at the end of each fiscal year, I believe it is important to understand what type of revenues have been generating the additional income and how they compare with our expenditures. For example, it is important to distinguish what revenues we consider ongoing or reliable income that is dedicated for an indefinite period beyond annual appropriations or other revenues that are dedicated for a minimum of five years. Ongoing revenue examples include property, sales, franchise, TOT and other taxes. Ongoing expenditures include items such as salary and benefits, professional and contract services. We want to separate those from one-time revenues and expenditures that are considered non-recurring in nature. For example, when a developer builds a large number of housing units, we generate permit revenues as they are built, but those revenues are not ongoing. Because of this, we can't count on the revenue to continue over time. A new development must take place in order to generate additional permit revenues. Same can be said for expenditures such as capital, equipment, design or studies. What this graph is displaying are actual ongoing revenues versus ongoing expenditures. As you can see, from the 2018-19 fiscal year is when we started to see the gap begin to shrink from previous years, which were discussed with council during that time. And this concept of the gap between ongoing revenues versus expenditure shrinking, along with concerns about city's road conditions and what to do about the recreation center and the potential of having to build a new city yard led to proposing a sales tax measure. As you, oh, excuse me, as you can see, ongoing revenues were lower than expenditures in 2019-20, but went back to positive in 2021, thanks to an influx of sales tax revenues. However, at this time, it is projected to flip back to negative in the current fiscal year if budget expenditures are fully expensed. For the moment, I'm going to skip ahead to slide 10, just so the flow of the information goes a little easier. As this slide indicates, the ongoing property and franchise taxes have been a steady incline since 2018-19, while sales tax and TOT have been more volatile. Sales taxes decreased in the 2019-20, but had a sharp increase to nearly $10.5 million in 2021. However, the 2021-22 projects that amount to decrease by approximately $2 million to what we believe is a more normalized ongoing figure of 8.4 million. The biggest factor for increases or decreases will likely be determined by what the price of gas looks like moving forward. TOT revenues have been dropped since 2018-19, but we believe it will work its way back as perhaps, and perhaps exceed that figure as long as new restrictions are not put into place inhibiting travel. I'm going to skip to slide 12, I'll come back in a minute. We see how the major ongoing expenditures have been trending. Salary and benefits, which are our highest expenditure item, was trending up until 2120, 21, 21, after the city went through a number of retirements and produced vacancies in a number of high-level positions, whose replacements came in at a lower step and without the longevity pay, which helped decrease costs. The city also left a number of positions unfilled for an extended period of time as we worked our way through the pandemic. Now that the majority of the vacant positions have been filled and purchase increases have started to materialize, we are seeing salary and benefit expenditures rise above 2019-20 totals. The other major categories including the sheriff contract and professional services, such as legal, engineering and planning, have for the most part been steadily increasing. Computer license and support service costs have also continued to rise. As we add more software, which increases efficiencies, there are also ongoing licenses and support that must be paid on an annual basis, and those costs may increase by CPI or an agreed upon rate, such as with the Excel program where we recently enacted a 2% rate increases over the next five years, which we believe will generate savings over what was previously a 4% or if we were going with CPI. Now I'm going to go back to slide nine. What this slide is illustrating are one-time revenues versus one-time expenditures, which tells a much different story. The gap between ongoing revenues and expenditures outside of the 2019-20 fiscal year has actually widened each year. The addition was driven mostly by interest earnings as fair market value adjustments significantly increased returns for the first two years. The last few years have been driven by grant revenues from the CARES Act and now ARPA As this slide illustrates, 2018-19 through 2019-20 has significant interest earnings, which took what would have been a deficit in 1920 to a surplus. That was followed by large increases in grants from 2021 to the current 21-22 fiscal year. Permits also reached a high in 2018-19 and have since been holding steady at around $1 million, thanks to developments such as Saddle Creek and the Bressata Project. Moving to slide 13, we can see one-time expenditures, which are mainly driven by transfers out to other funds to pay for debt or equipment and infrastructure replacements. Over the past four years, the city has transferred over $9.3 million for this purpose. So assuming you approve the amendments before you tonight, this is how we project the end of the current fiscal year. The chart demonstrates the creation of the ARPA funds 101 and the transition of expenditures, transition of expenditures from Fund 001 to Fund 101. When all is said and done, the general fund and its associated assigned funds will have a total balance of $26,255,046, which would represent 97% of the $27,142,491 of operating expenditures, which we include the expenditures that were moved from to Fund 101 as proposed. In order to have a consistency of our comparisons from year to year, as these expenditures would typically go through the general fund if not for you this unique circumstance. If all the budgeted items are expensed, then the ARPA funds would have a remaining fund balance of approximately $1,461,321 to be utilized in the following years. Any savings from these expenditures would just increase the balance to go forward next The last thing I want to discuss, which is a segue for a future discussion, is establishing what is our need for reserve and what role does it play in our city's operations? Some items to consider for reserve would be to address future capital replacement needs, such as buildings, vehicles and equipment, recovery from a natural disaster, liabilities such as compensated abstances, pension and other post-employment benefits. Also have to consider potential litigation, new capital needs, debt obligations, using reserves to generate interest income and to account for any unforeseen expenditure needs. One proposed way to distinguish this need for reserve would be to create the following assignments. One thought is to shift funds from the risk management and increase the emergency reserve. Establish an OPEB and compensated abstances assignment to match the current known liabilities. Assign additional $5 million of the capital replacement fund to increase it to what we need today in order to pay for the proposed replacement schedule. This would also leave a little over $11 million of unassigned fund balance to address needs that may come up during the course of business and to account for the negative unassigned fund balance in the golf course fund. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dennis, any question? John?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Let me start out with just trying to understand one, one chart, Michael, it's on, it's way back on page four, slide four. Okay, so that one right there where the 2022 adjusted revenues and expenditures, does that, does the amount in each of those bars include what you talked about on the next couple pages, the increased revenue? Do we?
Yes, so, so the 2022 adjusted is taking into account the revenues we projected for ARPA, the 2.5 million, all the expenditures before moving them out to 101. And the assumptions we're making with the increased sales tax, the assumptions for the additional amendments to expenditures are all displayed there. So even with all the changes that have taken place during the year, the amendments we've done so far, the proposed amendments tonight and our new projections for revenues, we're projecting to be about 300, I believe, $68,000 in the good.
Right. So another question on the presentation, just to understand it. So a lot of times we get these, requests for a budget amendment allocating more money for one thing or another because we didn't foresee something or it came up and we need to address it. Now, are you saying that tonight we're asking to, to have a series of budget amendments that total 400 and whatever it is?
Yes.
$1,000. So, you know, I understand unforeseen things and obviously the cost of things have gone up, but what are the main factors that are, because that's a lot of money compared to, I'm trying to think, the budgeted expenditures were probably in the 24 million range, I can't remember exactly. And now that's a pretty big percentage that we were off for, something happened, so can you talk about that?
Yeah, so a lot of those ones are related mostly to, again, we just had increases and just the general cost of materials and goods. So a lot of this is addressed that, that increase that we just weren't seeing a 7%, you know, CPI increase basically affecting everything we buy. The other is that because of staff shortages, we've had to have a lot of employees working overtime where they normally wouldn't have. So we weren't expecting to have to utilize staff in that manner. So it's, it's not so much that in the overall picture, we're going to see an additional 468,000. I think at the end of the day, we probably will be absorbing most of that through savings and other accounts, but these specific line items that we're accounting for going over. So we just need to make sure that we have an appropriate budget to address these line items so that we're able to complete the work that we need to do, pay the bills that we need to pay. You know, doing items such as the cleanings of the yard to make sure that we're not spreading COVID because of, you know, incidents that happened there. These are things that just were unexpected that came up and we're just trying to make sure we address them.
And are those, so are all those the ones that are listed on the last couple pages of the staff report? That's what the total?
Yeah, the attachment has all the specific line items that are going to be amended through this process and what the new totals will be.
Okay. And one that, you know, I'm just wondering about, because a lot of them under the column saying amended general fund budget are zero.
Oh, for the first one, you're looking at the ARPA, that's basically showing that we had a budget in the general fund. We're going to be taking that down to zero and then allocating that same expense budget to the Fund 101. So we're basically transferring it to a new fund so that we can account for all these against the ARPA money that's been received.
I see what you're saying.
That way we can display to the Department of Treasury that all this money was used for the purpose of these expenditures, so they can't come back and argue and say, you just did this to increase reserves. No, it went to a specific expense, here's the accounting for it, it's all in its own fund, so it's, it's easier to display that in this manner.
Absolutely. And I'm noticing now, so I missed this actually, that that's, that page is actually ARPA fund, like you just said, it's the other page.
Right, the page three of the attachment has all the specific general fund line items that are affected by the amendments.
Thanks.
I think you already mentioned it, but just to clarify, the Fund 101 will be looked at holistically with the general fund, so when we are talking about, was it 97% when you're talking about the budget reserves? So that Fund 101 would be included in that number?
We're not including as far as a fund balance, but what we are including is the expenditures because when we go from two years from now, those expenditures are going to roll right back into the general fund. So we don't want to take that out of the picture and make it look like we have a reserve 100%, 7% versus expenditures because we're factoring all these $2 million worth of stuff out and then two years from now, roll it back in and now we're dropping our reserve by 10 or 20%. We want to have a consistent figure to base things on and since these are really general fund expenditures, we want to include that in the base for the operating expenditure total. So we're taking our general fund balance, comparing that to the true operating expenditures and coming up with a reserve and that's where we get the 97%.
Okay, great, thanks.
That's a question. Are you saying at this point that our expenses have outpaced our revenues?
When we're looking at ongoing, so when we're looking at the revenues that we really can count on, the thing that we know is pretty much going to come in ongoing for years, property tax, sales tax, TOT. If the budget goes as presented, which I have to assume that everyone's going to spend their budget, at the end of the day, that may not be the case, but I have to assume that they're, they're allowed to spend it, that they will. Then our ongoing expenditures, which are salary and benefits, sorry, I forgot the other items I showed on there, main one being salary and benefits. When you look at those expenditures, those ongoing ones, it's outpacing revenues as of right now. What's basically making our surpluses is the one times. So us getting, when we accounted for 2.5 million of grants, it makes us look like we have this really great surplus. The issue is when that grant goes away, how are we really looking? When that, the one-time sources aren't there anymore, what is our real financial picture ongoing going to look like? So at some point, when these one times start to go away, when the developments aren't there, when that permit revenue isn't being generated, how are we going to make up that gap to keep up with these expenditures that we have ongoing?
We've got a lot of grants lately.
Yes, the ARPA fund, like I said, is over $8 million of grants that we never would have gotten, aren't probably never going to see again in this kind of a manner unless there's some other crazy global pandemic that comes out. So this is really a one-time influx of money. We're not going to see this type of money ever again, likely. And so we'll have to account for that ongoing, that that won't be there. And then how are we going to address our expenditures two or three years from now when that goes away?
And let me add to that, Councilmember Batone, if you remember, for the last few years, we've been projecting deficits and ending up by the end of the year, closing the books with a positive. When we budget, when we budget a one FTE employee at 50,000, we presume we're spending the 50,000. When that employee transitions, retires and we have three months of vacancy, by the end of the year, we're not fully expending necessarily that 50,000. And so therefore there's a difference. We still have to budget the 50, assuming we're going to do it. Well, the same thing applies to materials and supplies and professional services. We, a lot of the times we budget for what we believe we're going to incur and in some cases we under, we're under and we have to do adjustments or we add new things to it and have to do adjustments. At other times, we want to make darn sure that if we're going to save 50,000 in a line item and we're going to be expending it, if we know we're going to exceed the 50 at the beginning of the fiscal year, we should be budgeting for what we believe. But if we come under, it means at the end of the year, there were funds that weren't allocated to some other use that then carry, hit the bottom line and then get carried over the next year if you choose to spend more next year than came in in revenue. And so you just kind of have to follow that ball and, and know that on the long term, we're ending up on the positive side is where we want to be. And if we end up in the negative, it's fine, given the amount of fund balance that we have. But it's not something you want to create structurally so that every year, you know, there's, we're always going to be in a negative or drawing down the bank account for year after year after year and then eventually having to feel like we're at critical. That's what we want to avoid.
I agree.
I had, one more question just about, I'm sorry, Ryan.
No, go ahead.
A couple of questions about Fund 100. So remind me again, it's for maintenance, replacement of, repair of things that we already have? And does it include repl, is that what it is anyway? That's the reserve we're, we're using that for?
I would look at Fund 100 as this, we're looking at a schedule of all the assets we currently have, knowing that at some point they're going to need to be replaced, whether it's park equipment, the roof on the building, a vehicle, a major piece of equipment. So we're factored into a schedule to say, from today until we know that asset is no longer be good and has to be replaced, how much money do we have to put aside? Or we try to put a number each year to assign, to put away in order to replace that when the time comes. So Fund 100 is basically saying, okay, as of today, we need, we estimate to be about $6 million and then we'll have to add a certain amount every year in order to make sure that every time these items come up for replacement, the money's there to do it. The Fund 12, the 20s, 21, 22, 23s, Fund 70, what that's going to really move to is if we're going to add a new capital asset, whether it's a brand new vehicle that wasn't, you know, a replacement, something new, some new piece of equipment, we would fund it there, but then that item is now going to be added to the schedule to one day be replaced and it's going to increase the amount that we have to contribute to that fund in order to make sure we have enough money to replace it when that item becomes, need to be, you know, re, need to be replaced at time it goes, gets canceled out. So that's really the distinction between those two different types of funds.
Right. I really like that. So talking about Fund 20, which is a parks and rec fund, say we do, we want to do something with the pool. Pool needs some, in fact, I think there's stuff in the budget or going to be budgeted for, for repairing a bunch of things over for the pools. Is that a, in the perfect world, say we had started this way back when, would that kind of thing, and right now we don't know, are we going to replace the pool or are we going to do all these repairs? Where would we have that, where we would, where would we have put that money in the past in anticipation of doing one or the other of those things?
I believe the way we would treat, you consider the way we treat in the past is, instead of distinguishing or assigning these funds for that purpose, it was just basically said, here's our reserve and the reserves are there to take care of these items when they come up. And so when we identified projects to do in a certain year, we were saying, okay, we're going to transfer the money from the general fund into Fund 12 or Fund 20 or Fund 70, we're going to purchase that in this year. We weren't really distinguishing in the reserves that there's a pot of money here that's really going to be needed for a purpose in the near future and really putting a dollar or that and committing those funds to it. We were basically just saying, we're going to build a reserve that's 75, 80%.
Okay.
And when these things come up, we'll, we'll allocate at that time. We're, now we're trying to move Where now we're trying to move to approaches saying, we're recognizing that these are, you know, future funding needs. Let's go ahead and earmark this reserve for that purpose, because that's really what it's for and why we've held on to it. And just assign it and have it ready to go when the time comes to make these replacements.
All right.
Councilmember, I would, let me add to that. When you carry a very large fund balance that's unallocated, the policy philosophical question that comes to bay is you've collected taxes from the taxpayers and you're choosing not to spend it because you accumulated this very large amount of unallocated and assigned. That you should be spending it for the benefit of the taxpayers. The purpose of Fund 100 and some of the other changes that address some of the accounting liabilities is really intended to enhance the transparency to the public that shows these are obligations we have as a governmental organization. And we've been smart in how we've used our money and can afford to allocate it to show that we've addressed a lot of these liabilities that other cities can't. But it also demonstrates that when then you look at what's unallocated, that it's a reasonable balance for a government to carry. That we're not carrying more money than we should be, that we should be spending it. But then it also demonstrates when you compare that number with the revenue and expenditures, that the really large 800-pound gorilla that we haven't been addressing and most cities don't do is the capital of streets and public infrastructure that ranges in the order of 100 to 130 million dollars that we're short 5 to 6 million to be able to fund. And that becomes the real large item that we have to address that we will be grappling with the next few years.
I like that approach. I want to make sure that parks and recreation things, whether it's playground replacement, ADA compliant surfaces, which I was just talking to Hilly on the way in, there's a grant that I guess we're going to get, which is going to be nice, but whatever it is, that if we've got to replace things, if we want to do a wholesale replacement of the rec center, that we should be looking ahead, similar to what we're talking about in the Fund 100. And it seems that Fund 20, unless we're going to have that included in Fund 100, it seems that Fund 20 should have some money growing in it, just like, because, you know, we did Marshawn Park a couple of years ago. It was how many, every million dollars it was. But when these things come up, some other park may need a wholesale renovation or there's a building we've got to replace, whatever it is, those kind of things should, it seems like we should have the same philosophy, let's save some money up. I know we can just say, oh, well, that's a good idea, let's take it from our 95% reserves. But on the other hand, it might be nice to say, here's some things where actually, there's a pot of money here that we're going to dip into when, and we're planning to dip into it when a big project like one of those things I mentioned comes up.
Let me speak to that because the distinction we have to make with Fund 100. So obviously, streets and sidewalks are not included. And when we say buildings, we're talking about the life cycle assets of the building that are larger than just maintenance. So the actual building structure itself, the full rec center, the senior center, the city hall building are not considered in Fund 100. And so, and we haven't, we haven't gotten to that point of understanding, how do we best plan for that? Because many cities, when they look at doing a full building replacement, they'll take debt financing so that the years that you're paying the debt match the years that residents are benefiting from that asset. Because if we pay cash for a brand new building today, it means the taxpayers over the last 30 years paid for it. And they may not be here to benefit for the next 30 years, the asset that they just paid for. And so there's a, there's a decision the council has to plan on. Do we want to pre-fund large capital assets? Or do we want to finance it so that the debt's paid for, but during the years that we have that benefit?
Got it. And that's a discussion we should have.
It will be, we've just gotten to the Fund 100 and the fund balances. And so I think eventually, we're going to get to those larger ones.
Great. Hey, well, thank you. And by the way, the report was, was great. Reading that just is a nice primer on a lot of city finances. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Yeah, one, I always get a kick out of the fact, every time we get out of one of these budget meetings, I always hear from people in the public asking us, and it just dawned on me, not to refer to the funds by fund numbers, but to refer to them by title. It's complete gibberish that we sit here and we throw fund numbers around like the public who we're supposed to be transparent to as if they know that. So I would hope in the future that instead of Fund 100 and Fund 20, we refer to what they actually are so that people sincerely understand what it is we're talking about. Two is, I think we really need to prioritize what we're doing with the money. John talked about parks and recreation. There's tons of parks and recreation grants out there, but there's not a lot of grants to be able to do street improvement, do the deferred maintenance and things of that nature. So I think when we start talking about what we do with money, that we really need to look at, you know, especially when, Chris, you talk about unallocated monies, that we have to look at what we actually need that we can't necessarily find supplemental funding for. Or as with most grants, there's a match requirement, whether we do it in staff time or whether we actually have to pony up that money. It makes it a lot more, I think, to the point on what we actually need when it comes to having those discussions. And as far as the staffing piece of this goes, one is, I don't know that any consideration's been given to what's going on in the world right now and the number that you just provided. But I mean, gas prices are soaring. And I would be curious if any, did you account for any of the increased cost in fuel as it relates to our fleet and what our staff need to do in your costs here?
Yeah, so some of the part of the amendments had to do, came from public works and what they're estimating that they're going to need to finish off the year and those fuel accounts and then those kind of items. So that was factored into our estimates, which is why you're seeing such a large number of 468,000.
Did you get up to $8 a gallon?
They're probably going to outpace my estimates, I'm not going to lie. So we'll probably come back to you around, you know, May for more amendments. But we're trying our best to get our hands wrapped around this stuff.
I appreciate the foresight to look into that because that's a real cost to the city and to the community. And the last thing is, you know, the one thing we don't talk a lot about, and it's not necessarily a strategy that I think the city's really implemented, but when we do have overtime for staff, we're not paying pension, increased pension obligations. So we're not increasing staff. So when we see a salary savings, you know, the $100,000 or so that you talk about, you know, I wonder sometimes overtime can be used to incentivize staff to a certain degree to those that qualify for overtime if they're not exempt. And I don't know if we've ever actually used that as a strategy. I'm not necessarily saying we should run positions vacant. But there is something to be said, a balancing act on certain tasks that perhaps, you know, like maybe running a rec center or, I'm sorry, a special event maybe, or something like that, where maybe we don't have the staff per se, the temporary staff to run the plumber building for a special event. But maybe staff would be interested in working overtime to be able to provide those events to the community. In which case, we could definitely have some savings, I think, in the longer term obligation that we'd have versus hiring a staff member to do those and be dedicated to that. So I say that all to say that, you know, we have to think differently about what we're doing with the money. But I think your report was thorough, I appreciate it. And I support your requests and have no issue with it.
And just to make a point on the numbering, I got into a little bit of the numbers with the parks funds because there's multiple. But the, we got into a little bit with the general fund because the general fund has multiple funds that make up the general fund. When we look at all the assigned, the signed funds, when you talk about the capital and the equipment reserve. So numbering was just my way of kind of distinguishing those different pots when you look at the budget and trying to make understanding that's all general fund, but separated in the budget book. So I apologize, I'll make sure to at least mention the names when I include those numbers.
One other thing that you just reminded me of is, you know, when we talk about, you know, what's going on with the money and we look flush, you know, one thing people, you know, really trust us to do is eliminate three things, right? Waste, fraud, and abuse. And so when we talk about unallocated monies and things like that, we all know what the deferred maintenance is. We all know, you know, our street index, what was it, worse than Pomona, I think, is when you guys presented that within the last three months, which is not good. We all know that the swim and racquetball club needs improvement. We all know there are projects and work to be done. So perhaps it might be helpful to produce something that shows kind of the wear and tear and aging of the infrastructure and the facilities in a real simple, comprehensive list so that the public understands that when we're sitting here talking about all of this and we look at what's going on with the numbers, that they know that there are, it is nice to have monies to be flexible, like in a wild wind event of almost biblical proportion. If you look at what happened in Laverne and Claremont. But it is nice to have that money available when we need it. But on the flip side, you know, when I go out and I talk with folks and they're asking me, you know, oh my gosh, you know, you guys said your reserves are at 96, 97%. And then I have to articulate to them and say, well, actually, if you really kind of look at what's going on, you know, do you think this is in disrepair? We really need to do that and this benefits so many other people. It would be helpful to have that just so they can point to. A quick reference, you know, I don't know if you guys have it laying around, but food for thought.
I have another question, if I may.
Sure, Dennis.
When we say for future products and future events and future maintenance, is that money in the reserves or is it in other funds or a combination of both?
It's a combination of both. There is regular maintenance activity that occurs that you put in the budget. The point, the goal of Fund 100 was to remove the really large dollar amount ones that happen periodically. So that you don't go from a budget that has $200,000 to around 200, around 200. And then all of a sudden, you're at $600,000 for a year and then you're back down to 200. So we want to take that project that would have been 400, put it in the reserve so it's funded. So that on the operating budget, when the council or a resident looks at that budget, you have a more steady state. So that if there's a jump, it's really an abnormal thing to have a jump that you really can analyze. But that you know, that $400,000 capital expense, you know, halfway through the life of the potential replacement, when you can see that you're at 50%, like an HOA, you can see you're 50% funded for a thing that's 50% past its, in its life, then you know, hey, we're on track. And if, it's okay if we're a little bit behind or a lot behind on certain things. But at least if we're moving the overall mark closer to match the life expectancy, that's the goal. So you'll see them in both budgets.
It's a combination of both.
Right.
What's Fund 100?
Capital assets reserve.
Thank you.
All right. You know, the benefit of being last is I don't have to say much because everybody else has said it. So anything I would say is just a repeat. Just one question, on the money that we're getting, the one time money we're getting from the feds, okay, is there a date definitive that you have to report on this? Or is this one of those items that you just need to make sure you have your ducks in a row in case you get called on the carpet for it?
Basically, all the revenues that we collect from this have to be spent by '23, '24. Now, if there's a certain project, from my understanding, there's a project we procure and we do a purchase order. It can be completed by 2026, but that depends on how we want to, you know, mark the expenditures to be against these funds. What we really appropriate to, it just has to be a general service, a general governmental service. I'd rather have the money be available in the general fund where we have no restrictions at all and just appropriate whatever expenditures we find fitting to be a part of this fund and not try to shoehorn a specific project or something in there. The main thing is we spend the money, we allocate expenditures to it and then we use the funds appropriately.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back. Any further questions? And I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion approved.
That was the motion to approve all the budget amendments?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
It's a receive and file, I have it.
It's two, the motion's two.
Yeah, I had a receive and file, but then I got a message from the city manager, it needed to be a motion.
To approve the budget amendments?
Yeah, we're going to need a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Pardon me?
We will need a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Mr. Mayor, we'll bring it back and consent for the actual approval. So there's a disparity between what the motion is written on the staff report and the motion that the actual description on the agenda, which is why you saw the back and forth on the file, receive and file and action.
All right, so we'll wait and?
So we receive and file it.
Receive and file. We're going to receive and file is no problems? Okay, just, you know, we did, we did have a receive and file note and so the actions.
Can't promise that I'm going to support your amendments, but I might.
Yeah, we're inclined to do it right now, but in two weeks.
Okay, thank you guys very much. Okay, number two is authorizing a rental fee increase at Sycamore Canyon. Equestrian Center to be considered by the authorizing, the city manager designated to approve such fee increase request if such increase is warranted. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Scott Wasserman, Parks and Recreation Director. And in early February, the lease operator for the equestrian facility, Sycamore Canyon Equestrian Facility, notified the city of significant expenses that she is incurring that are really above and beyond anything she has experienced before. And her original intent was to, per the lease agreement, notify the city of her intent to raise rental fees for the horse stalls. However, per the lease agreement, because the vacancy rate at the facility is just a tick above 20%, she's actually required to run this by the city, her proposed fee increase by the city. And it's basically subject to the city's approval. So in exploring this issue with the lease operator, I collected a number of documents that she provided to substantiate significant increases in the cost of pretty much all of her operating expenses, which include, you know, the feed and the grain, the wood chips, labor, good chunk of what she spends to keep the place running. And what we're asking this evening, we think that there are a couple more things that we might request to validate the expenses. What we're asking this evening is for the City Council to authorize the city manager to effectuate the increase in the rental fees upon the receipt of additional documentation to his satisfaction. And with that, I'll leave it to the City Council if you have any questions. And the lease operator, Ms. Lori Adair, is also present if you have additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Scott?
Just, sorry, just so we're aware, how does the current lease fee compare to other surrounding stables in the area? I think from what I understand, in the past, we were up at Sycamore Canyon, we're pretty low as far as lease fees.
I, if it's okay with the council, I think that the lease operator, Ms. Adair, can probably respond to that better than I can.
Hi, yeah, we're, we run about average, maybe a hair lower than other facilities. But we do offer a lot more amenities, which are expensive to maintain and operate. So yeah, I, we should really be charging a lot more. I just try and keep it, you know, affordable for my customers and try and keep it what the market will bear. Unfortunately, when I started this venture, my costs had gone up due to the world situation. They have increased even more. I just received a letter today, my manure removal is going up $100 a load. And it typically was $300 per load, now it's going to be 400. And I do 68 loads a month. So that's a 6,800 hit on top of what I'm already, you know, running behind. So I just, you know, with the fuel, I'm expecting the shavings to go up as well. The hay is continually, it's like gradually climbing. I just got a load the other day and it was $600 more than it was the previous month. So I'm hoping that we won't be back here soon to like try and do another increase if things keep climbing the way they are. But I'm hoping things will level out.
So you want to have any questions of Lori? Thank you, Mrs. Adair.
Thanks.
Okay, any further questions? I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move that we authorize the city manager to approve the rate increase upon reception of documentation that he feels is adequate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay. Okay, the third item we have is authorization to initiate, uh, a request for proposals, uh, uh, to conduct an audit, uh, of the audit, uh, the Department of, excuse me, Development and Permitting Review Process and authorize the city manager to engage in, in a qualifying consulting firm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council had approved a budget in previous years for audit, additional performance audit services. And the city had yet to perform an audit under the direction of the council. The council also did not provide direction as to what specific audit to perform. And so tip, and so the audits what we're talking about are different than when we hear financial audits, which we do. We do financial programmatic audits currently in the city. So financially, every year you see our financial statements come forth in around the November, December timeframe. It's the audit and an independent firm, uh, assesses the financial statements and tells you are they reasonably representative of the finances of the city, so that somebody can rely upon them and actually make a decision. And so in essence, when you say cash says one point two million, they're validating that the controls and their evidence demonstrates that you can rely that there's one point two million at that last day of the fiscal year. And so that's useful, so that folks can rely upon the financials. But it doesn't necessarily tell you about, well, are we operating efficiently and effectively? It just tells you that, yep, that, that's the correct number, but doesn't tell you that the number actually should be more along the lines of six hundred thousand, not one point two million. And so the audits that are contemplated by the council are, are called performance audits. They really look at the efficiency and effectiveness of a program, a service and activity. The controls that are in place to ensure that we're operating and achieving the objectives of the program. It's a more comprehensive and broader look at, at not just numbers and finances, but how we do the work, the systems, the processes. Are we duplicating efforts? Are we missing something critical? Or is everything that we built up in our systems not leading us to achieve an objective that the city may have in that specific program? And so what you typically would do, if you were doing a comprehensive audit program in the city, would do a full risk assessment of the entire city, breaking the city into more discrete pieces of activities that then you would assess factors of risk, rank order and make a decision to pick high-risk areas to do an audit. And a high-risk area would be that are significant activities or high-level priorities or significant risk of things like how much cash is moving back and forth or, um, legal restrictions that you need to adhere to that if you violate, you may have to return funds to the federal government or a granting agency. And so what we, we did not do a full risk assessment of the city, uh, to kick off this first audit. What I did is I took a look at the programs and services that we had, took in the complaints that we had been receiving historically from residents, hearing from the council about what things were working and not working over the course of the last year, and ascertained that it would be better to at least initially demonstrate some success in one specific area that has tangible benefits in multiple areas. So our development and permit processing system is the area that I've, I'm recommending that we conduct an audit. Because it's the one area that drives long-term activity that happens. And it can be from somebody doing a remodel of their house or even a water heater permit, all the way to a large subdivision like Brusada and how we process all the elements, all the way to the final approval of the council. And in identifying ways that we can streamline, reduce cost, uh, find best practices and even identify where we may be subsidizing where we shouldn't, a private benefit. And so this action of coming to the council isn't required. Uh, we, you've already made the budget appropriation, we could have proceeded with the RFP and received responses. And those responses will most likely come higher than the twenty-five thousand that's currently allocated, at which point we would need to come to council for a higher appropriation. But I thought it's very important to bring to you the scope of the audit and the, and the topic so that we can get any input from the council, or if this is an area you don't want to look at at all, we can look at a different area. And so what we plan, the RFP is included in draft form. It has a mapping of the different process, of the processes that are in the Exela permitting system. And what we want to do is we want the consultant or auditors to engage some of our applicants, our staff, to identify areas that, you know, these are, these things work, these things don't work. What I've seen over the last year and heard, you've heard publicly folks applaud staff in the process that said, this was fantastic, what we went through, the staff was easy to work with. Um, and I think our staff, and I should give a lot of credit to Sherry and Henry Noe, have worked really hard to ensure that we continue to improve upon our processes internally. And then I've also heard nightmare stories about how something was very difficult and challenging to push through the city. While we should take all that input, I think until we do an objective analysis to look at it and determine, well, where could a breakdown occur and how do we fix it so that in the future the breakdown doesn't actually occur? And if something does occur, it's because of something that we either didn't address or it's unique and we can deal with it on a one-off situation. So with that, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation is to approve proceeding with this RFP and that I will come back once we have RFP submittals and with a price to know if it's greater than the twenty-five thousand dollar appropriate, appropriation, to request additional appropriation to proceed with the contract.
Well, this is a limited audit. You, you're not doing the entire city then?
No, this is, it will be just focused in, in permitting, development and permitting, and it won't necessarily be every process within there. They may take the three or four highest volume or highest risk processes within that function and audit those. So we may, because there's, it's very difficult to go look from a water heater permit to a subdivision process without incurring a six-figure cost.
You're also gonna look at fees then and see if they're too high or too low or with these, with other cities?
The fee, we're currently conducting a fee study. And so that, what will happen most likely here is they will identify issues related to fees. But they will most likely defer to the fee study that's being performed to determine what the appropriate fees are. They may come across certain activities that were not charging fees. And I'll give you one example that came up in the last year, um, where there was a request to remove approximately a hundred and thirty trees. Um, and the question came up at the, I don't know if it's planning or DPRB, about having our city arborist go out and assess whether these trees really are trees that should be removed. And it, so setting aside the policy of whether our person does that assessment on a private property versus a private arborist that we review that report. If we were gonna send our arborist out there to do that, we won't, we don't necessarily have a fee that we can charge that developer. And so the fee study may not necessarily capture fees that you're not charging. So my expectation in the audit would be if there's something glaring like that, that they would point it out and it's something that we make sure we put in the fee study.
Chris, can you, um, in times past, uh, I've seen you present, uh, on performance auditing on different things. You shared a couple examples that maybe might be helpful to the community and some audits I think you've been involved with. Um, one related to potholes and I think another one related to fire department that resulted in a significant, uh, financial savings to that organization. Can you talk just abridged a little bit about those performance audits and, um, why this is meaningful? I think that'll help illustrate the value of this tool.
Absolutely. So generally pothole repair programs are about responding to complaints of potholes. You know, you have the acute ones where it's a big deal and you catch it and you want to deal with it. But most of the time, residents report a pothole and you put it in the system to try to get to it. And we put into place a performance metric of trying to get to the complaints, let's say, within twenty-four, seventy-two hours. Which on its face sounds fantastic that we're being responsive to the public, we're addressing the potholes because people are complaining. And so if you're meeting those metrics, we would think you, we're doing a great job and we're efficient with our resources. But if you take a step back and ask the question, what are we really trying to accomplish? Well, we're not, uh, what we're, we're not trying to accomplish just being responsive to a resident. We're trying to accomplish increasing the quality of the roads. And so when you take a look at the pothole repair program, and I did this in San Diego, you would find that you would have an employee go out and have a list of the complaints of potholes. And they would drive to a location, fill that pothole, drive to the next location, fill that and go around filling the potholes. And in a typical day, be able to accomplish six to eight potholes because of the distance they're driving to get to the complaints.
You mean like Villa Verde, then Horse Thief Canyon, then back to, you know, Valley Center or something like that?
Correct, so they, they may try to align them so they're not doubling back. But you'll be traveling from Villa Verde on the south side to then somewhere on Covina and then heading up to the Terrebonne area. And so when you look at that and you say in a typical eight-hour day, if you extract lunches and everything else, you're spending seventy percent of your time just driving. And not, and, and a small fraction of the time actually filling the pothole, which is the most important. And so when you, when we looked at the data and looked at what was important, we were trying to accomplish improving the quality of streets while being responsive. The recommendation that came out was, let's utilize the data that's coming from our residents to say, here are where the potholes are as the starting point where we start the work. And then let's go out there and start filling potholes, north, south, east, west, for a certain time period. So you address all the potholes in that specific area and then you move on to the next one. What happens is you extend the time it takes to respond to the complaint because those eight potholes may take now fourteen days to get to. But you've, you've addressed hundreds of potholes at, at a time when you're only addressing eight a day if you do it the original way. And so I took that methodology to Chico where I was doing the operations. And I went out with the public works crews and I said, hey, let's give this a try, because they were doing it the old way. And we spent, we go to a pothole and we would spend thirty minutes going to every single pothole. And we were able to accomplish forty-seven potholes in thirty minutes. Where if you take a look a day doing eight potholes, forty-seven in thirty minutes is huge impact over that. And from a cost savings, you're using the same amount of cost and accomplishing far more. The, the only cost that increases is the amount of materials because you're filling more potholes. And so that is, that's the kind of thinking that a performance audit gets out of that one. And, and briefly on the fire department audit, um, the fire department audit was about response times to, uh, emergency calls. Ninety percent generally is the number, percent of time you have a medical call and ten percent are fires. And we staff fire departments for fires because they require a lot of equipment and people. What will happen, when the call comes in, that's a medical call, it will get triaged and processed and determine whether we send a fire engine or we don't send a fire engine, because we don't want to send something out unnecessarily. And what was happening, it would take approximately one minute and one second in San Diego to, uh, to make the decision to send out a fire engine when you went through the decision tree. Well, when you look at the totality of calls during a performance audit, you realize that eighty percent of the time you're sending a fire engine. So if you change your process and just assume you're gonna send a fire engine during a medical call, you first alert the station to start preparing because they have to wake up if it's night, put on their gear, get on the engine. And that typically takes sixty to ninety seconds. You go through the triage tree and when you decide that you don't need to send an engine, you cancel the engine. And most of the time you're catching the engine before they've even left. You've removed a minute of delay from the time you get an engine started to the time they arrive on scene to provide medical care to an individual. And the net cost, when you evaluate what impact does that have? You can evaluate how many lives did you save is one way. But realistically, the way we valued it is, if I had to add fire stations and fire engines to accomplish the same response time reduction that we did with just a process improvement, it's tens of millions of dollars a year that that city saved. And it's for the first time that I saw in all my time in San Diego that a department, rather than fighting recommendations, literally implemented it before we even got a final report out the door because they thought it was so effective. And so that's the power of a performance audit that it could have on a city. And I think some of that is what we can garner here.
I appreciate the, uh, explanation and I think that, uh, I appreciate the, the topic that you selected. I know when council talked about this in the past, uh, it was very open to the staff to figure out where you thought it would be the most meaningful and impactful. Um, I, I think that in the interest of transparency and process improvement, people want to know that the organization is working to improve itself. But sometimes we sit up here and we, we intrinsically can say, oh, we feel like we're doing better. We feel like based off of the experience of one or two people, we're either doing better or worse. Um, but this is an objective way, um, pursuant to generally accepted government auditing standards that we can actually put something on paper. Uh, and then can we do follow-up audits later to be able to see if we've improved, if we adopted recommendations?
My, yeah, my recommendation to the council, if, if we want to go down the path of conducting these type of audits, that the council forms an audit committee and these reports go to council with the recommendations so that the council's involved in implementation of improvements.
Cool, yeah, I think this is a good first one for us to digest and then see recommendations. And if it's fruitful, uh, and it doesn't have any holes in it, then maybe we can make it work.
Would those be potholes?
I, I was going for that, that was the layup.
Trying to get.
Well done.
Any further questions?
I, I agree, I was wondering if Ryan wanted to make a motion to, uh, approve the recommendation.
I appreciate that, I would, uh, move approval of the recommendation as proposed.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Any further? All, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes five, zero. The only thing I wanted to ask, because you brought it up, this fee study, uh, when do we expect this fee study?
We're hoping to have a completion so we can discuss it in June, uh, so implementing of the budget. But it remains to be seen if we can get all the data actually loaded. Because part of the conversation's going to have to be, um, we know in some cases our fees are really below what they, the costs really are. And so there's a discussion the council has to undertake to decide what level of subsidy in some cases will you grant on some of those fees. And so it may be several meetings that we're gonna have, uh, during the early part of the summer.
Thank you. Oral communications, members of the audience, speakers are limited to three minutes or as may be determined by the chair. Anyone like wishing to speak to the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff and city council reports, city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just pulling up the document. So this Saturday, I want to thank our code enforcement staff, Sanders Towing, the Los, our sheriff's department and the rest of our staff that will be participating in the etch and catch event at city hall on Saturday, starting at nine AM. There are several slots and you have to pre-register. Uh, we currently still have openings at the eleven-thirty to one o'clock, um, slot. And this event allows folks to have their catalytic converters etched with an identifying piece of information. So if that catalytic converter is stolen, we can tie it back to an actual victim and be able to start reducing the number of thefts that we're seeing for catalytic converters. When I look at the sheriff's office reports that the council gets, it's, it's now become numbing in terms of how often we're seeing vehicle type of crimes like catalytic converter thefts. And it's all across the state, unfortunately, because of the value of the material within that. So it's great that we're, that Sanders Towing is volunteering, that the sheriff's office is all hands on deck with our city staff to do this event. In terms of Charter Oaks, so today, we held the neighborhood watch, the sheriff's office did, at the Charter Oaks facility. There were about a thirty-five folks in attendance, including the mayor, Captain Ashrafnia and myself and a number of different CAT deputies that were there also. The council has scheduled for Monday, the twenty-first at nine AM, a special council listening session that will be held at the Charter Oaks Community Room. So we provided the information to Haven that will provide, uh, an, an early notice to residents. And then once we prepare the agenda, which we'll do earlier than we normally do in the agenda, since it'll just be the agenda notice, we'll, we'll have that sent out to all the residents at the park so we can maximize the number of folks that are there. The intent of that meeting, from what I understand from the council, is to listen to the residents. And so unlike some of the previous meetings where the city manager has taken a larger role in trying to understand the problems and address the issues and concerns, this one is one where we'll be, we'll be listening and not necessarily responding and answering. So we just take that input in, process it as staff and determine the next steps as it pertains to that listening session. Parks and Recreation has created a schedule, a Monday through Thursday schedule for, for drop-in activities. I'm not sure how publicized it's been, but we've provided it to, uh, management to get through their publications and we're placing it within our monthly publications involving a walking group, Scrabble, canasta and billiards that we will offer during the course of Monday through Thursday at the park. There was a complaint, uh, leveled against a city employee involving a theft by a resident during one of the council meetings. Um, I need to clarify, when the reference is made to a city employee, it doesn't mean a employee of the city of San Dimas that we hire as a full-time employee. It was a contractor that was on site, that, that was the alleged individual that involves here. So I wanted to clarify that there was no city employee involved. That individual was contacted by the sheriff's office, um, and the resident decided not to pursue prosecution. A facility's assessment is currently ongoing at the park and so the assessor. A facility's assessment is currently ongoing at the park, and so the assessor had been out at the park yesterday, conducting some of that assessment. And so they're in the process of developing a draft, and that draft will hopefully outline a number of different issues that need to be addressed, that can then be used in the cap, in the development of a capital improvement program. There was a complaint regarding a sweet sweeper issue, that the park was not using water within that street sweeper and just kicking up dust. Uh, staff confirmed that water was indeed being used and is continuing to be used in that street sweeper. There was an overnight parking issue, uh, complaint that vehicles were parked in front of two units. Both those residents have agreed to stop parking overnight, and onsite managers will be doing periodic checks to ensure that that doesn't continue. The same goes for a complaint involving residents sleeping in vehicles. The onsite managers are monitoring the situation to ensure that that's not occurring. I'm not sure how often they're actually monitoring, but that's something that we'll continue to do. For the capital improvements, there's a number of different capital improvements that have been raised by residents. Um, some involve the back fence, where staff has already gone out there and done some improvements to the back fence. Um, some involving, uh, bringing commercial laundry to the facility and, you know, street repairs and a number of other issues. Uh, that's something that, uh, we're gonna wait until the resident committee is formulated. My understanding that is, a mailing has just gone out, uh, for nominating individuals for the resident committee. So once a resident committee has stood up, that the capital improvement, the results of the facility's assessment should be something that is engaged by management, the city, and the residents to determine what the priorities and process should be going forward with capital improvements. There was a request, as part of those improvements, for a no U-turn sign at the entrance of the park. Uh, the Public Works Director and I visited that site, took a look at that, and we've scheduled that item to be discussed by the Traffic Safety Committee at their March seventeenth, um, item, to ascertain the, does it meet the criteria for a no U-turn sign that will be placed there? And what secondary effects would it have down the street when school traffic incurs and schools try, they try to U-turn somewhere else? We're probably gonna require some enforcement if it meets the criteria in a no U-turn sign, because I'm sure people will try to do a U-turn where it says, no U-turn. The other capital improvement that was, uh, requested was the sidewalk on the west, southwest side, on the west side of the park on Covina. It's a very large segment, and I understand why it wasn't done. It's a significant expenditure to do a sidewalk there. And so just like when we look at other parts of the city that are county-annexed property or property that doesn't have the infrastructure, we typically require a developer, when they're developing a parcel that doesn't have those full improvements, like sidewalks, as a condition of approval of the development, that they have to put in the sidewalks and the infrastructure. We don't regularly go in and add sidewalks to facilities that are already improved at this point. And so that's something that, once again, will, will, we're not saying no to anything. We're gonna put it to the resident committee, and when they, if that's something that they want us to pursue, we will price what that improvement, um, is. And one recommendation I will have, when we're considering capital improvements, when you, when you get a price, I want to know what the price per unit on Charter Oaks would be. So if I had to know, if you're gonna assess me today, although you're not assessing me, what would it cost me for the improvement we're asking for? So it puts into context how much money that improvement would cost. So if you're asking me to do a four-hundred-thousand-dollar wall behind the Charter Oaks facility between the train tracks, what, you know, are you, is that twenty dollars from, uh, a year for me? Is it fifty dollars a year? Is it a hundred dollar one time? Kind of gauging what that cost would be, so that they can make well-informed decisions. And so that's the last of the current update that I have. In terms of the goal line...
Chris, let me, uh, interrupt just a moment. When you guys go out to, uh, one of the things that came up this afternoon at the meeting was, when you guys go out to look at the no U-turn sign and the sidewalk issue, whatever you're looking at, um, one woman spoke about a red curb just to the west of, uh, the driveway, that they have difficulty when they're trying to make a left turn out of the park. So maybe Sherry and, and her crew can look at that and see if, see what that looks like. Uh, actually, uh, I rode with the captain today, and, and we experienced that firsthand. And so, uh, it'd probably be something to look at. I can understand the, the concern. Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll do that. And sightlines are important for safety if you're gonna be crossing to head eastbound. And the goal line, we're currently still evaluating the supplemental environmental impact report regarding the parking ride or the goal line, and we will be preparing a comment letter, and our consultants are working with staff to do so, prior to the April fourth deadline.
Super. Thank you. City attorney?
I have no reports tonight, Mayor.
Members of the city councils, appointments, uh, the, to the question commission?
I think we did those a couple of meetings ago, right?
Okay. Council members' reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency? Hearing none. City council requests for future items, comments, and updates. Dennis?
Well, I often hear people say that it's, it's difficult for them to know what's happening in the city, since we lost our city newspaper, and that was a great loss. But I always point out that we have something here called the city newsletter, the San Dimas City Newsletter. And this is just chucked full of information. And people should take a look at this, because it has not only classes and different events that we're having in the city, it also has, uh, different projects that are happening in the city. And it's not as good as a daily or weekly newspaper, but it's better than nothing at all. And so I would recommend that people take a look at this. There's one article I'd like to, uh, point out to you, and it's on page four. And this is important, and we, we've talked about this before. It's California's, uh, the Senate Bill thirteen-eighty-three, which is the organic waste, uh, bill. And you're no longer allowed to put your garbage with the regular trash. You have to put it with the green waste. And this article explains where you put what, and what you put in the green waste, and what you put in the, the, uh, things that you're trying to save. And I would advise that you read this on page four. But, you know, take a look at this newsletter. The city does an excellent job on it, I think. Uh, and I think that our staff has shown that they really know what was happening. So I would advise people, take a look at this newsletter, and you'll know what's happening in the city. Hopefully someday we'll get another newspaper, but that's a long ways off. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Eric?
On the topic of SB thirteen-eighty-three, I'm glad you brought that up, because just today, I, well, today is trash day, obviously, and I was wheeling out my trash cans to the curb last night. And the gray bin went from being hardly ever full and generally full of Amazon boxes, if anything. And, uh, now the thing's overflowing. So I just made a note to myself last night, when I was wheeling it to the curb, that, uh, I need to call and get a bigger, uh, gray bin, so that I can actually, uh, dispose of my trash properly. But, uh, a lot of people that I've talked to, not only in the community, but in other cities as well, are completely unaware that...
Yeah, this is statewide.
Yeah, absolutely. It's statewide. It affects everybody. And it's a big change. It's a big change.
And I understand there's gonna be very severe penalties on cities that don't apply, apply this correctly. Like ten thousand dollars a day or something, which is considerable.
Uh, a couple of things that I have is that, uh, we, earlier, Chris talked about, uh, etch and catch. And, uh, I really just want to underscore the importance of events like this. Um, there's very few ways that, uh, that a part of an engine can be tracked. And the best way is through some sort of unique identifying number. Um, a lot of people, when, when you talk about engraving a number onto something like catalytic converter, always say, well, somebody could just scrape it off. Well, the odd thing is, even if you were to engrave a unique identifying number onto a part like a catalytic converter, and it were to be scraped off, and then that person were to be subsequently caught with your catalytic converter and the number removed off of it, it wouldn't be able to be traced back to you. However, possessing anything with an obliterated serial number is still a crime. So they can then be arrested for possessing something with an obliterated serial number, which provides a, uh, you know, another avenue for enforcement. Uh, something to consider, um, depending on, uh, you know, the way things go in the future, I'm hoping that there's a more long-term solution to catalytic converter thefts. But if history has, uh, shown us anything, it probably won't. Uh, I know a lot of other cities, uh, in the area have gone to, uh, pass municipal codes that prohibit possessing more than one loose catalytic converter. Um, and I know in many of these, uh, many of these cases, uh, multiple catalytic converters are being caught in somebody's possession, and unless a victim can be found or there's a unique identifying serial number on it, uh, there's no real enforcement to that. And, you know, if anything else, we could pa, pass a municipal code, uh, that would prohibit something like that. Uh, it would be something, rather than nothing. Uh, just planting the seed. Maybe it's something to think about. Um, on another topic, I've been attending some committee meetings with city staff, Rotary, the Chamber, uh, Masonic Lodge, and we're planning a twenty-twenty-six celebration for the, the city. Obviously, it's the two-hundred-fiftieth, uh, independent celebration. And we're starting very early, because it's gonna be really big. Uh, that's the goal. So, that means a lot of pre-planning, and, uh, I would appreciate it. I know it would be, um, appreciated by the committee if the city were to, uh, draft a, a resolution to proclaim, uh, the Rotary Foundation Doing Business as San Dimas Twenty-Twenty-Six Committee, as the city's official celebration planners for the two-hundred-fiftieth independent celebration.
Is that a motion?
That would be.
Second?
Second.
All right.
I think all, all four of us would second that.
Great. Um, so, the last thing that I'll close with...
Get the vote. All in favor of this?
It, it's just a request for a future item to come back, so it just needs two votes.
Uh, and then the last thing I want to talk about is, uh, something that I touched on at, uh, the end of last meeting. Um, but today, I had, uh, the honor to attend the funeral services for Huntington Beach Police Officer Nick Vella, who was killed in that helicopter crash, um, off Newport Beach, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. Um, the streets of Huntington Beach and all along the route to the Honda Center where it was held were just absolutely lined with thousands of, of residents showing their support. People were waving flags, wiping away tears, giving each other hugs. Um, it was really touching. Um, and it was truly amazing to see how many people turned out, not just, uh, police officers from all over the place. I saw police officers from as far away as New York that came out. I probably missed people that came from farther, but, um, there was a lot of, uh, nursing staff that, that helped with that whole, uh, situation. And, um, you know, civilians that were, that were there and, and helped extricate him from the helicopter as it was, yeah, in the water there, that also showed up. And, and so it was quite clearly, uh, a big event for a small, smaller community like Huntington Beach. Obviously, they're bigger than us, but, um, but everybody came together and, and there's a, in, uh, in where I work, there's a, a poster on the wall that everybody kind of makes fun of. And it says, "Pain shared is pain divided." And really, that was very true, because e, every single person, me included, I didn't really know Nick, um, from anybody. But, uh, you know, it really was heartbreaking, hearing stories, uh, about him and his wife, and his family, and his daughter. Um, but I, I even felt that, and I, I felt that pain. And, um, so, with that being said, I did see a presence, uh, from the LA County Sheriff's Department, and being that they are our law enforcement agency locally, I just wanted to say that I appreciated their presence there and, uh, and showing their support as well, uh, you know, outside of the county. But, um, but, but still, it's very important to, uh, to show our support, um, and have a presence in, in things like that. So, thank you very much for being there.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one is, uh, I just, uh, want to thank everybody that turned out for the grand opening of Popeyes. That was a lot of fun, uh, for everybody that got out there, the mayor, uh, myself, and, uh, some of the folks from the Chamber, uh, representatives from the supervisor's office, the county assessor's office, uh, as well as, uh, Senator Portantino's office. Um, so it was really a great event, and, uh, if you haven't had a chance to get by there, uh, get by there and check it out. Um, interestingly enough, uh, the design of that particular Popeyes is something that the, uh, organization, uh, find, it's a very unique design for Popeyes, the actual building. So, uh, it was interesting to learn that they're looking at actually using that in some of their marketing material. Um, it's a different look from the majority of the Popeyes that have been, uh, produced. And so, uh, something unique, but, uh, fitting, uh, where it is. So, there's, uh, more options than KFC, uh, in town, and so get in on your chicken sandwiches. Uh, one thing, um, Eric talked about the catalytic converters. Uh, I don't know if there's any interest, but it just so happens that Senator Portantino, uh, is working to be able to move forward Senate Bill nine-eight-six, which would actually be able to require, uh, automotive manufacturers to imprint the vins on catalytic converters, and also have a requirement that recyclers are, uh, liable for ensuring verification of the origin of the catalytic converters before, uh, they are recycled. Um, so, uh, I would, uh, hope we would be interested in writing a letter of support, uh, for SB nine-eight-six, uh, and push that to his office and the other legislators.
Absolutely.
Cool. So maybe, uh, staff, you can work on that and bring that back.
That's a long time coming.
Yeah. Um, doesn't necessarily address penalties, so I'm still open to your ordinance idea. Um, but it's a step in the right direction. Uh, another thing, um, and I don't know the mechanics of this, but I met with somebody recently, uh, and they were wondering, um, and I think it's a good idea, uh, that many of the businesses benefited in town from the pandemic and the context, the restaurants, in terms of allowing outdoor dining. And now that the emergency order has been lifted, many of them, uh, are now finding themselves trucking their ta, tables back inside, but there's still people that want to eat outside. So, I don't know, but I would be interested in hearing from staff, and I don't know if anyone else here is interested in hearing about this particular topic, but I wonder if there are places in town, um, where we allowed them to be able to, uh, dine outside? And if there's any way we could make that work for some of these businesses, um, either on a pilot level or a more permanent level? Um, you know, it took a while to get, uh, posetos, to get their patio and get that fenced in and what have you, but people are out there doing it, roadies is, and I just think there's other areas in the community, um, like over where Las Palmas is and some of those businesses, that would probably, uh, benefit from that. And I think the residents would benefit from that. So, I know, uh, there could be a lot to that, um, but, I don't know. Is anyone else interested in that?
I would be.
And, uh, I think it's a good idea.
Cool.
So if I'm not mistaken, Henry, this will be an MCTA study session? Because I think we have to change the code to, depending on what scope you're looking for.
That's some evaluation of what, what you might do.
I mean, it, hopefully it doesn't go like the last thing I brought forward in, in that regard, but, uh, but, you know, I think this will be a good thing. I think. Um, you never know till it's going. Um, you know, another thing, um, is, uh, and this one's actually for, for Captain Ash and, and maybe for the city here, is, I'd be interested to see if we could put together, um, some, some agencies put together like a citizens academy. And hearing the concern about the street person, the street people, if you will, as they're referred to by some, um, it is concerning, and I think people should know, uh, should know their, what, what's, what's within their ability to do. I mean, people can place somebody under citizens arrest, uh, for challenging them to fight or using violent language likely to incite a violent response. But that's a misdemeanor that's not committed in the presence of a peace officer. So those citizens have to take action to be able to place someone under citizens arrest. I'm not sure everybody understands what that process is mechanically. And so I'd be curious if we could put together something. Uh, I know some places do a citizens academy where they can actually, citizens can sign up, go to the sheriff's station, learn about what our law enforcement agency does, but also learn about some of these nuanced things. Um, I don't think as, uh, um, as, uh, prior councilman, Templeman stated, I don't think people, you know, we don't want vigilanteism, but I think people absolutely should... don't want vigilante-ism, but I think people absolutely should know what they can do. And they should be able to know the capabilities of the law enforcement agency and understand when they need to stand up for themselves in that way and say, hey, I want to place this person under citizens arrest, I'm willing to stand up for that, I'm willing to go ahead and do what's required to make that happen. So I don't know, is anyone else?
Would that be something that we could refer to the Public Safety Commission to look at and report back to us?
Yeah, I think that would be cool, and staff with Captain Schrafne could get that going and maybe come back to us with the thoughts from the sheriff's station and the Public Safety Commission on what we could do with that.
If I may, since I'm preparing that agenda tonight to finalize it, if two members of the council want an agenda, we can have it, agendas for the 15th.
Please.
Yes. Cool. And one last thing, and then I'm done, I promise. You know, I don't know, in talking about the budget, if we've done, and I can't even believe I'm going to say this, but a green assessment in the city? I know we've talked about things like the electronic blowers, and we've talked about some things. I see you laughing, Chris. It's not funny. Hey, listen, if it wasn't about the money, I wouldn't be talking about this, but there's a very valid issue right now.
I'm impressed.
Yeah, thank you. There's a lot of progress being made here tonight. But I don't know if we've done that, and I bring that up just because the rising prices in fuel and some other things going on, it might be a prudent time to look at that and what the savings would be to the city as we see these things increasing. Because as we start talking about the disparity in revenues and what we're seeing with expenditures, you know, we could see the ROI on that not too far out. So, yes, you're looking.
I would just say that because most of that mow and blow work is done by our contractor, it would probably be more of a discussion with them to see if...
Get away from the blowers. I don't care about the blowers. I'm talking about like the fleet. I'm talking about...
All electric vehicles and...
The lawn, I mean, if we have any gas lawnmower, anything that's consuming fuel, diesel.
So you want me to get rid of our Toro Dingo and replace it with electronic?
I'm not talking, listen, it took a lot to get the Dingo, okay? So let's leave the Dingo alone. Put it on that chart of life cycle, and let's figure out how we go green on the next one, but, yeah.
If I may, there's a lot of folks out there that hit up cities, and we've gotten constantly different firms that are looking to come in and do an energy audit, and then show you how if you do all this replacement and finance it, that the energy savings pays for the improvements. And it kind of, it goes both ways, but it's no problem to bring them in. I tried telling staff, we'll just give you bicycles and not drive cars with gas, but they said, oh, that one. So I figured, but that's something we can look into. We do have about $250,000 of AQMD money that we haven't decided on the allocation of that funding, that can go to support electric or low-emission type vehicles. So we may want to have that conversation about how do we want to allocate that funding, because we may consider we have no charging stations somewhere where the public can use at City Hall, or the purchase of a couple of vehicles that are zero emission.
And I'm glad you bring that up, because that actually is part of what I was going to talk about here, is that just yesterday, I heard that the wait time for an electric vehicle is pushing two years with some of the companies that are there. And because of what's happened in the last couple of weeks, there is a growing demand for electric vehicles. So one is, you know, I know we went through some discussion about streamlining the process, and I think this was before you got here, but I think you guys were here when we streamlined the process for electric vehicle charging stations, so they were a lot more efficient in terms of the approval. But I also am curious if we could put something together for members of the community who might be interested on what's required for them to be able to put in what they need to put a charging station in their home, or to be able to plug in their electric vehicle at their house. I had a couple of people asking me that question. I think the mayor went through this process not too long ago, and it seems a bit involved. But I'd like to know if we could have a presentation on that process soon, so that the public is aware on how they could do it. And if there's anything that we can streamline in that process in light of what's going on, there's a lot of people going out and buying electric vehicles now, so, yeah, that would be helpful. Anyone else like to hear that information? Okay. All right. And other than that, we had Little League Opening Day. I think that was pretty cool, and I think all of us got out there. What? What do you?
I don't know that you want to go there.
What? Oh, my goodness.
There was a video.
Yeah. Well, the mayor did throw the ball. I mean, it was a low sinker, I would have swung at it, but, you know, whatever. But...
Catcher caught the ball, man.
Yeah, well, it did bounce. I mean, you know, that's not the one that made, the edited version anyways. But it was really cool, a lot of folks were out there. I know John was out there, Phil's coaching, I think one of the teams are assistant coaching, his grandkids are in there, and then I know, you know, it was just a really cool event seeing everybody get out there. It's great to see everybody back out there again, just like it's great to see so many smiling faces here tonight with no masks and the mandates rolling back, and hopefully they'll continue. So that's all I've got. I hope everybody has a good weekend. Week.
Well, it's always great to see a baseball game, even if T-ball, they've lowered the age, so, I mean, the Twins are literally three and a half, and they're four because they're going to turn four before the cutoff, which is like August 31st, like a couple days before that. But T-ball has always been great, especially like the enthusiasm, when a ball gets hit and it gets past anybody, you've got at least six or seven kids knowing that they've got to get that ball. Now, sometimes there's a wrestling match out there, but it's great fun and good to be out there again on the baseball field, even if it's, this time all I got to do is bring a chair, you know, before I was out there trying to get them to get organized. But anyway, yes, that's good. The outdoor restaurant dining, I'm glad you bring that up, I just wanted to add to that, that when we did the downtown renovations and all that, the street improvements, we made the sidewalks really wide, and just crying out for outdoor dining, we have standards and restrictions which have evolved, given that people who have put those in have wanted some minor changes. So it's good to take a look at that. One thing specifically is we've got a standard for the exact kind of fence that you have to put in, and looking around at other communities, I don't see that kind of standard, and as long as it meets the standard of being a good fence, it doesn't necessarily have to all look the same, in my opinion. Those kinds of things, and whether you can put a planner with flowers in it there or not, are great to discuss. So that's downtown, the sidewalks, and then Ryan mentioned Las Palmas, and shopping centers that are like that, too. Obviously, got to work with the shopping center management, but taking some park, you know, a couple of parking spots out, and even letting them construct sort of a, an extension of the sidewalk, which may not be wide enough for just, you know, an outdoor experience like you're talking about. Anyway, a lot of good stuff to talk about, and it just livens the scene, the street scene or whatever, to have people eating outside, and it's kind of nice. Dennis mentioned, the only other thing was Dennis mentioned, I'm not even sure what it's called, but the Parks and Rec magazine or guide? Is it just called City Newsletter now? Okay, and well, it should be, because that used to be just almost all recreation programs, but now it's got so much news in it, and it is really valuable. And I believe if you did not keep the one that came in your mailbox, you can still find it online under the Parks and Rec Department, as I recall. It's basically a PDF of that same thing, so you can look at every single page with all of that information. And I, too, lament the loss of San Dimas Community News, which went out of business. It was really a, you know, two-person operation, husband and wife putting that out, and they gathered all the news stories and the advertisements and everything like that, so, and it came out every month, it was great. There is the San Dimas Community Post, a new publication, which is, has a schedule that I haven't really been able to figure out, it's every month, every couple of months, but it, too, has a lot of interesting things about San Dimas, human interests as well as what's going on in the city. But another thing to, it's, to me, I like seeing information from all these different sources, and then you kind of get a whole picture, is what I think. But I really got nothing else tonight, so thank you.
Thanks, John. I'll keep it short. The one thing that today I did in the Neighborhood Watch at Charter Oak, and there was 45 or 50 people total with the deputies, and it was very, very encouraging to see the people there, and the encouragement of the deputies and Monique, the sheriff recreation person that handles all these type of meetings, and she was telling me that she has these meetings every month, and so it'll be interesting to start paying attention to where they're at, and if any of us can go to it, you know, please do. I think you'll be very pleased with what they're offering. You hear stories that, well, I don't know anything about Neighborhood Watch, and I don't this. The reality is, if you take the time and go, you're going to be impressed, and you will, you'll go back. So with that, you know, we have this weekend, as I said, the etching of the catalytic converters. We thanked the, you know, sheriff's department, the volunteers, the city staff, but one thing that, and we did thank them, but I just want to point out that we couldn't do this without the volunteers, the community volunteers, Sanders Toes, Scott Dilly, and that group of folks, plus all the community volunteers that are coming out to help, you know, usher cars around and do it. So they've really, you know, a few months ago, we had this, or last year we had it. Since then, Scott Dilly was telling me that they've had three or four of these in other cities, and that we by far were the best organized, and I think that's a credit to the sheriffs and, Chris? No, go ahead.
No, I'm waiting.
Okay.
We have, just to remind the council, we have to continue in a closed session after the meeting.
Yeah, you could have waited. And also, those folks who felt like they wanted chicken last week, and Popeyes opened, and I, too, talked to the current owner, and this really is a shout out to our planning department. They came in, said they'd like to do this. The next day, we were working on it, and it's a lickety-split, we got it done, and they were just very, very pleased with, Henry, your group of people, and all the other people that were involved from the city staff, and I think that's going to be a real good addition to our city. And I understand that the place next door is moving along. What's the name of that place? Baby Bros, yeah, and I think they're moving pretty quickly, so we'll get that opened. I could sit here and talk about a lot of other things, but I think we're just going to move forward to the closed session. Have a...